You're live.
Okay, I'd like to call the April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Public Utilities to order. At this time, we would like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded both video and audio. During the public comment section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address and will then be given five minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board and need to, they need to use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the public comment section. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the public comment section. Those attending in person should sign up on the sign up sheet located near the entry. Comments are limited to five minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions the visitors to not disclose confidential account information or to discuss account information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may also email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. My name is Tom Groneman. I'm the second district member and board vice president. Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, position number three and board president was unable to attend this evening's meeting. Other members of the board and staff include Bill Johnson on my far right, general manager, David Haley, member at large, position two, Bob Mylan, first district and board secretary Jeff Bryant, third district, Mary Gonzalez, member at large, position one, and Angela Lawson, chief deputy counsel on the far end. Please remember to put your phones on silent and also be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. Before we begin, let's do the pledge and then we'll have roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, our nation, our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call Groneman.
Here.
Haley. Haley. Mylan.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry. Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before I entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda for April nineteenth, are there any additions or correct or any additions or changes?
I move to approve.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call Groneman.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, approval of the minutes of the work session of April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
No, I'm moved.
This is Jeff, my second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those, you want to do roll call, please.
Roll call Groneman.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, so approval for the minutes of the regular session of April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Are there any additions or corrections?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the minutes of April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Roll call Groneman.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, this time I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Next section on the agenda is public comments. So first person I have signed up tonight to speak is Dave Smith. You can come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Is it R?
Yes.
I'm David Smith, under Foreigner Troop Avenue, Farm four one one, Kansas. I was made sure I was first on board tonight because I want to thank the board for what they did for me a couple of weeks ago, thanks to Mr. Johnson. The people of Wyandotte County do not understand the system of BPU. They have done very well with getting people to understand their new bill, which is being changed, so I understand, which is a good thing. BPU is a bad, a bad word all the way around for many years. And I've been coming here since first January, when the, when the board was reelected. I see a lot of changes for the good, and the more people that come, can come and listen to what you have to say is better off. We cannot do anything unless we start at the bottom. And here in Wyandotte County, the bottom is here because we cannot get to the courthouse. We cannot get to the meeting at, at the county because they don't want to listen. But BPU has somebody that goes to the board meetings ninety-nine percent of the time. Now, I have looked into this in the last few years, and I am retired. I probably should have been here a long time ago, but I didn't. I had too much going on, and now I'm retired. So now I could devote my time to the underprivileged and the low income people. And the only way after studying all the information I have, in order to get anything done, we got to start here. If we can't start here, we can't do anything because BPU runs the city. And I mean that with all my heart because we have the power, we have the utilities, we have the electrical, we have whatever it takes. So in order to get anything done here in Wyandotte County, we have to start here. Once we get to here and people understand what the system is, then we can get it to you people, you people can get it to the courthouse, and we will get something done. All right, thank you for your time, and God bless everybody on this board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Next, I'll call Evelyn Hill. If you can state your name, address for the record, and you have five minutes, just the board.
My name is Evelyn Hill. I live here in Wyandotte County, six forty Washington Boulevard. Good afternoon to the board members and to Mr. Johnson. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Johnson and his team. He did like he said he was going to do. He had a luncheon for social service agencies here in Wyandotte County and allowed them an opportunity here about BPU. And also he listened to some of their challenges that they're having with the families here in Wyandotte County. So first, I wanted to thank Mr. Johnson. Secondly, I wanted to thank Ms. Rose Mulvaney for her continued work with us as we continue to work with options to decrease the pilot tax. So we've been working on that for a while and will at some point bring it to the commission. I am here tonight on behalf of the Justice and Equity Coalition here in Wyandotte County, and we have organizations across the county that are a part of our organization. And tonight I'd like to bring to your attention the deposit and fee connection structure that you currently have in place. BPU customers are charged a deposit fee based on their credit score. BPU is the only utility in the KC metro area that charges deposits based on credit scores. I did a short survey of utility companies in our metro area of the utility organizations, and I was startled to find that BPU is the only one that charges both the deposit and the connection fee. So what I have done is I will give you all a copy of this. I just made a little chart and I'll run through it very quickly. BPU, the population here in KCK is one hundred fifty-six thousand plus. If you have a good credit score, connection fee seventy-five dollars, deposit fee maybe a hundred or less if you have a good score. Medium credit score, connection fee seventy-five dollars, deposit fee two twenty-five or according to BPU standards for the medium score. If you have a poor score, deposit fee seventy-five dollars, connection fee could be three hundred fifty dollars plus. Kansas City, Missouri, Evergy Utility, population low five hundred, eight thousand, deposit fee zero, connection fee zero, do not require credit check. Overland Park, Evergy Utility, one hundred ninety-seven thousand plus, deposit fee zero, connection fee zero, no required credit check. Then I went out a little bit further, all the way out to Springfield, Missouri, one hundred sixty-nine thousand plus, population, deposit fee zero, connection fee one hundred dollars, I'm sorry, deposit one hundred dollars, connection zero, no credit check that was required. So I'm just bringing this to your attention again, and we would like for BPU board members to take another look at that policy, policy structure along with Mr. Johnson. We are happy to be a part of those meetings as we discuss with the community some opportunities for change, and I'll pass these out. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Next, I'll call Jackie Brown up, and if you can state your name and address for the record. Jackie Brown. Okay, I'll call Ty Gorman up. You can state your address and name for the record, and you have five minutes.
I'm Ty Gorman, two eight four three Parkwood Boulevard, KCK six six one zero four. Up here, glad to be here with y'all again for the same reason I've been up here a few times to talk about what I and my neighbors, a lot of whom are here today, have asked for from y'all. One is to lower costs for low income residential customers. And residential customers need these big fees that were just discussed are a big part of that, what makes BPU the most energy burdened utility in the state. The fees create a situation where people in KCK are spending a higher percentage of their income by far than anywhere else in the state and in the region for the most part. The, you know, the, the rate case that we're embarking on now and that I hope we can have a lot more discussions about where all of the folks who are interested in this get to have substantive decision-making discussions with the board, with staff to learn about and have input into this rate case, rate hike proposal from the staff that the board has been asked to consider by June fourteenth, when the public hearing will be held. The opportunity to make changes in BPU's structure that helped alleviate that energy burden is a really important opportunity that I want everybody to know about. The fees are a big part of it, and we know that the UG fees need to be removed from the bill entirely, not just reduced and should be replaced with progressive taxes. Y'all have told the commission to do that in the past. I encourage you to continue to push the commission to make the right choice there. But as Dr. Hill pointed out, that's not all the fees we're fighting that hurt low income customers the most, these connection, disconnection, deposits, all these other flat fees, grid fees that are put on residential customers at higher relative rates than industrial or commercial, large commercial should be reduced and stopped as part of this rate case process. It's going to get real hot soon, and shut offs need to stop when it's hot. It kills more people in the heat than it does in the cold. The more people die of extreme heat every year by far than die of extreme cold from utility shut offs. And the, the assistance dollars and the energy efficiency dollars that are out there right now make it so that though that debt doesn't have to be on BPU's books long enough to make a big impact on BPU's bottom line. There, you just need to be connecting those resources with the people who are, whose bills are skyrocketing because their house might not be up to, like be able to hold in the cooler air in the summer. That needs to be addressed quickly. It needs to be connected to the extra hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars that y'all put into the assistance programs this few months ago. It's not getting to the people, if it's not getting to the people, it's needed to the point where you're going to put someone's life in danger in the heat by shutting the power off. The board, the board needs to make a decision not to do that at those extreme heat times. And the rate case should be an opportunity to, for, for us and the people and the other interveners to show the board exactly how the nuts and bolts of how residential bills and especially low income residential bills can be and should be reduced overall, not increased over the next couple of years as the, as the staff has proposed. So that's all I have for today. I appreciate your time. Hope to follow up with you soon.
Next, I'll ask Lisa Jaeger to come up. You can state your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
My name is Lisa Walker Jaeger, address Parkwood Neighborhood, Kansas City, Kansas. Happened to be going through some issues with health, and thank you, Mr. Johnson, for taking time out to help us. But the problem is, is that when you, you only have one opportunity to get assistance, and I think there should at least be two because you got the winter and you got the summer. And also life brings issues. So I think we should add where you are able to get assistance two times a year. The next thing is you have people that are on fixed incomes. I happen to be on a short-term disability. And with short-term disability, you only get a percentage of your pay. So if I went on a fixed payment plan or someone helped me with my payment where they, where we went through your program, it's very stringent. And how stringent it is, you make that payment plan, which might be a hundred dollars, but then you got to pay the total amount of the whole bill plus your payment plan, even though they spread it out for three, four, six months. So if I'm on a fixed income, I can't afford to do that. If you're on a social security disability, can't afford to do that. People are not able to do that, and this is very important. I just say God take us through trials and tribulations, but he took me through one so I can learn how this program was. I talked to a few other people with Evergy, well, that are on social security. So what they do is they have a plan where they make the same payment every month. They don't never have to catch it up all, so it's the fixed payment every month, as long as they make that payment on time or within that timeframe. So if it's two hundred dollars, they have to make that two hundred dollars every month. They don't make it too high where you can't afford it, like three seventy-nine or something like that, but they make it at a reasonable bound. I think we should consider that here that will help all the, the elderly that are on fixed incomes, even just working people, because we have situations. Disability, if you go out on a short-term disability or if you're out on workman's comp, you only get sixty-six percent of your pay. Sometimes that don't even cover your mortgage. So I really think that some people really need to look at this situation. I'm asking you guys also. I copy everything that Ty said today. I think that it's time that you stop using this as a cash cow and start helping the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call Brooke Williams. Okay. Mr. Williams, if you can state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Brooke Williams, I live on Tim Street. I just wanted to touch on what seemed like I was hearing a mantra about this connection thing, and I wanted to know what were the nuts and bolts or the process to connect, reconnect, turn on? Is, does somebody in the building actually pull a switch to reconnect? Or is it just a button and you charge us for that? And what, why? So if you can explain, what is the process to reconnect or the connection fee? How easy or hard is that?
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
So for most residential customers, we do have an automated process that we, we've established, and we can disconnect your service from the offices. Okay?
Push of a button. Yeah.
Takes a little bit more than just a pushing a button. If you want me to answer the question, I'll answer the question, okay? Sir, if you're not signed up to speak, then, I mean, I'm trying to address Mr. Williams' question, and, and as the instructor said earlier, you'll have to be patient and quiet. If you would like to sign up, we will let you, let you speak. On the other, so there's, there's a whole process that customer service goes through to determine who's delinquent, who's not. Those, those accounts are gathered daily. It goes through a check and balance process. And then, yes, there's this file that's put in our system, and those meters are disconnected. For the larger meters, we actually have to roll a truck to disconnect them. On the water side, we have to roll a truck to disconnect all the water meters. So our cost really goes back to the cost of service for that operation to be able to have people to go out manually disconnect and reconnect. Okay, so that's, that's the crew cost, that is all the service, equipment, everything else that goes with that operation and how long it takes for them to form, form that action.
Can I expand on that? Okay, so most, if, I live in an apartment building now. So if I get a late payment disconnect, do I qualify for a truck to come out and reconnect my services?
Could you repeat the question again?
What qualifies someone to have a truck come out and reconnect, disconnect as opposed to a simple push of a button? Because most people in here have experienced the disconnect at one point in their life. You pay the bill and they say it'll be on in a matter of hours or twenty-four hours. And so what qualifies a push of a button versus a man in a truck?
Well, there's, there's actually setting up a file to be run through our system, which you can call it pushing a button, okay? And if you live in an apartment, then you certainly are responsible for the electric unless the apartment management group is paying for that service. You're probably billed directly for that.
I am.
There's a lot of apartment buildings that the water meter is paid by the management company, so you may not be paying for your water charge. If that water bill is not paid for, then that whole apartment building is subject for disconnection, and then that will require us to roll a truck out there to disconnect it.
Okay, so what about the electric?
One minute.
One minute? Okay.
The electric is the process I established earlier from most.
Okay, so a pushable button for that one.
You want to call it pushable?
That's what it sounds like. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next, I'll call Louise Lynch. If you can state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
My name is Louise Lynch. I am a resident of Kansas City, Kansas. I have many issues today, and one being I've been speaking against these bills and the weather for over two years now. This is two years too long. Not only in the summer do we have to be concerned about the electric being cut off, but water. Last summer, you all cut off my water twice and should not have been because we were a KIRA applicant. But now we no longer have KIRA. Now money is tighter. Rents and cost of living has skyrocketed through the roof. The one-time-per-year assistance is not good enough. I don't even agree with Lisa's suggestion of twice a year. If you are on a fixed income, twice a year is not enough. If you are medically ill, twice a year is not enough. And the temperatures that you utilize to say that to cut it off, your electric, if you're ill, is not good enough. My husband almost died last year. I can't have a repeat. I can't have any of that, nor can many people. We have a lot of cardiac, we have a lot of asthma, we have a lot of breathing treatment people, we have cancer people, we have people with all kind of horrific medical conditions that don't meet what your current criteria is to get assistance or not be cut off. To take away somebody's water, even though you leave their air on, to take away their water is taking away their ability to even use the bathroom. And what if they're incontinent? You are creating another public health hazard. There has to be a better solution than that. That cannot continue. We can't go there. So I don't know what the remedy is, but we need to figure this out before the spring is done. The hot weather is already rolling in. We do not want people dying. We don't need to worry about the guns here, we need to worry about our utilities. Our guns affected Ralph Yarrow, but it's going to be our water and our light that's going to affect and kill people here. We cannot let that happen. Enough is enough. This can't continue. There's got to be a better solution. We're not saying give everyone free, but you can't have compassion, you can't have humanity. You have a lot of fixed income people. Rents are through the roof here. They are higher here than in Johnson County. To pay that on top of, for a shack on top of a four hundred dollar light bill when the heat is high or you get cut off, even if you're on a payment plan, you can't afford to pay it. Does that mean you deserve to die? That can't even be a question. We have to find a better solution. The other thing I want to talk about is what I read in the paper a few weeks ago in regards to a complaint about handicap parking. The other thing I want to talk about is what I read in the paper a few weeks ago in regards to a complaint about handicap parking. I was totally offended by that article.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Totally offended because I utilize disabled parking. And to know that somebody was more than inconvenienced because they are not physically able from a company as large as this and as rich as this is truly an atrocity. I hope that that is not true because that cannot be tolerated. And I hope also that you reconsider what conditions, what devices people have to be on to get help and not give people a number as everything is skyrocketing. Unless you're gonna give a number as to how many caskets are gonna have to be needed for the people in windup. I hope that's not a number that we have to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call Evelyn Hawthorne. If you can state your name and address on the record.
My name is Evelyn Hawthorne. I live at two zero five six North Tremont Street, Kansas, six six one zero one.
Alright.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is the issue. For one thing, you corner of the market all the utilities and the light bills. Why would you want to cut anybody off anyway? Because you're gonna get your money. Number two is the taxes and the bad fellows you at the Board of Public Utility are in bed with. I was looking at the news the other day and there was a, at the old ammunition plant that they're building solar roofies. And the word that came out several times at the news was residential areas. Are you all gonna be bed partners with these people? Are you all gonna give us a choice to whether we want it or not, or is this gonna be a horse play on? Another thing is this is hard on my purse, my husband's wallet and my family. These increases and these taxes that you all are giving the residential people in the northeast side of Kansas City, Kansas. We don't know what they consist of, we don't know how you all thought about it. And we need to renegotiate your thoughts on you're gonna get your money anyway. Why cut these people off? My husband is a US veteran from the Vietnam War. He has Asian ownership. The United States won't even back up what he had, but he's suffering every day. He's in the hospital now. After I leave here, I'm going there with him. My father was a veteran in the Korean War. He had a bullet that grazed his side all the way around. Every time we took off his shirt, we seen his wound. And he was an electrician at the Sunflower Ammunition Plant. This foolishness has to stop stepping on the throats of poor people. I know this is not my home. I know where I'm going, but you all are going somewhere too. And I'm not in charge of it. I'm not in charge of that. I'm speaking. We don't want to disrespect you. We don't want to hurt you, but you are hurting us. You are getting on my nerves and you are hurting us. So if you can sit at your round table or square table or whatever you're doing each day and consider the northeast side of Kansas City, Kansas, the west side of Kansas City, Kansas, because you market the whole area. You're in charge. We have to have you respect us because we have no choice but to respect you because we need your utilities. We need your water. Why are you doing these silly things? What is the matter? What did we do wrong? Please, sit down at the table and renegotiate and cut it in half. I'm willing to go halfway with the pilot of Eugene, the trash, the whatever else is happening. Cut it in half, please. I'm speaking. Cut it in half. Thank you very much and have a very good day.
Thank you, Ms. Hawthorne. Uh, next is Rodney Easterwood. If you could state your name and address on the record, please. You have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Rodney Eastwood, uh, Parkwood area. Due respect to you, Mr. Johnson and board members. Our past uh members have come up and spoke passionately about their situations. I got a sad story too. Okay, we've been hearing it for how long? Ms. Lynch had been in the trenches for two years, she stated. I've been here many times. This is my first board meeting. You guys sit in many board meetings that I have. I'm sick of hearing the stories and I'm not even on the board. So it's a constant replay of what we hear every day. Everybody's got a story. You guys, I was in there and meeting one time and the budgets assess, there was a two-point-five-million-dollar surplus. You know I'm telling the truth. If, if, and I, you could, you could speak up on me. If I'm blind, please correct me because I want to be true before our people. Why is there a surplus? You got people educated enough to tell me how much my bill comes when they're not in my house. How come you can't have enough people educated enough to tell me why is there a surplus? Got to be a reason. Somebody's being overcharged, overpaid on a situation that's not needed. So what do you do with the surplus? You go give it to a community of people free. People go get uh, your bill lord or everything. Y'all do it. Why, why don't you just share so everybody can get a piece of that pie? Because we're all paying the bill. Our situations are in southeast Kansas City, Kansas, have too many issues to come with this one. When I first started coming to meetings, these, these seats were bare. Look at them now. It's gonna be standing room pretty soon, but as soon as there gonna be TV cameras in here, we don't want to get there. We know you guys hear our plights. We know you guys are educated. Bear what we're saying so it don't get deeper. We're not stopping. Our bills go on. We're gonna come and complain next month, maybe. I hope that's not the case because we intend to progress our plight. We're not doing, I'm not doing this to waste my time. I have other things to do. But one thing that concerned me more is to speak for the people in my community because they're not here to speak for themselves, but we hear their pain. We see them, we're related to them. We're bleeding. You guys may not be so. You guys have jobs. If you wouldn't have a job, even not, if you wasn't getting paid, you wouldn't be here today. So you can afford your bill, maybe. Maybe you can, but a lot of people can't. So we wishing you would hear our plight, we don't have to keep begging, mother, may I? Or the community that we've been in for years and years, years, having the same complaint. Come on now, y'all know I'm telling the truth. We need to act now. We can't wait two years down the road. We can't wait six months. We've been waiting for three, four years already. This is ridiculous that we are grown people that can't understand English, that we need to bill lord. Communication is fine. We don't need communication. When I turn on this light switch here, you don't have to explain to me how the electricity work. It doesn't matter to me. I just want to make sure the light comes on. We want lower bills. We don't care how we get there. We don't care whether you push a button, whether you push a lever. We want the bills lowered. When we ask the question about why is this happening to us, we don't want an explanation. We probably don't know what you're talking about, no way. But is the communication gonna lower our bills? No. We have to do better. Board members, please don't let us come up here getting worse than this. Please don't. I'm in the community. I have these things. And I'm telling you, it's gonna get worse before it gets better if we don't act well. We've got a few months before a vote comes up. We want to see results. We don't want to come here on another vote talking the same message. That's why I was upset, Mr. Johnson. No disrespect, but I hear excuses all the time.
You have one minute.
Thank you. I don't need it. Thank you.
Next, I'll call Fanny Hill. Phil, if you could state your name and address on the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Fanny Hill. I live at forty-three ten Parallel Parkway, KCK. I sit in this room and it makes me nauseated. It really does bother my stomach. It really does. Because I'm in the street with a group of young people seven days a week on Quandara with signs, "Stop the violence, stop the murders, stop the killing." There's a lack of love in our community. And if our leaders can't lead in that, we're lost. We're lost. If our community, if our leaders can't love our community enough to fight for us because every time I go to a commissioner's meeting or to this meeting, it's like the people against the leaders. A house divided will not stand. Democrats against politicians. Our nation is probably at its weakest. Our cities is at its weakest simply because we're divided, refuse to love and refuse to come together. I mean, we're fighting one another like we're one another's enemy. We're not enemies. We are not enemies, but there is an enemy that's keeping us divided. There is an enemy out to destroy all of us. Every last one of us. He has one plan to destroy, steal and to kill. Our sons and our children and our daughters are being killed out there in our streets while we sit here and fight one another. It's hard for me to believe that we have leaders that can't rise above that and hear the cry of the people. The people are crying and the people are hurting. The money that's going to our partners, United Way and other organizations to pay the bills once or twice a year. I can't believe there isn't some way some of that money could be used to get utilities at affordable rates to the customers. We just want to know that you're trying. I've been coming to meetings. I haven't heard anybody say we're looking at or we look at a way to get utilities at affordable price to us so we can get it to you. That's all the people are asking for. I can handle mine. God takes good care of me. Thank God that he does. I have no problem paying any bills, but I didn't work and struggle and pinch pennies to save a penny to give it all to taxes for real estate and BPU. There is such a thing of emergency money, and I'm sure we all like to have a few pennies that we can fall back on. As nobody in this room doesn't want a checking account with a few pennies in it or a savings account that they can fall back on. If it keeps going the way it is, I'll be living out of my savings account. When you're living out of it, that's because you don't have enough. So that means nothing's going back in. And all the people is asking for is for you to show some compassion, some care and concern. I mean, everybody just sit and look and we walk against one another. Nothing's done. Money is given to our partners to help and then you go down, they pay your BPU bill, so the money comes right back to BPU. So and then everybody's wondering, well, when it gets back to them, where does it go? I mean, you gave it to the partners. I go down, I need my bill paid. They pay PU for my bill. Why can't BPU just take that money and put it into wherever they produce?
You have one minute.
Get it at affordable rate. That's all I have to say. Let's just, let's stop and think about one another. Let's try to love one another. Let's look at the enemy that's trying to divide us and conquer us and stop so much griping at one another. Let's try to love one another. That's all we have to do is be willing and want to, and you got a God that's gonna help you do it. Anytime you want to do right, you got a God that will help you do right. The problem is, we don't want to. We like the way we are and like what we're doing. That's why the violence in our street is the way it is. Too much hatred, too much division. The enemy is too busy. Nobody's looking at the enemy. We're busy fighting one another while he's standing on the sideline taking our sons and our daughters and our children. This weekend, all the murders, that was somebody's son, somebody's father, somebody's daughter, somebody's mother. I feel those people's pain. I told my prayer team every day.
That is time.
Pray for those families. And we're praying for this city because, look.
That is your time.
To deal. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Rob, do we have anybody online signed up? Ms. Stevens, if you can state your name and address on the record, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Susan Stevens, forty-eighteen Silver Avenue. Um, I just have a question that somebody, a neighbor online asked me to, to check about. I don't know anything about it, but she, she wanted to know why are we contracting out to Capital Electric? And so I, I, I just thought I would ask that. I don't know if it has anything to do with why the rates are higher. Uh, but if somebody can fill us in on why we're contracting out to them and how that, maybe how that impacts our customers' utilities costs too, that, that would be great. Thanks. That's all. I just have that question.
Uh, the short answer is uh BPU along with every other utility that I'm aware of uses some forms of contracting for certain type of services, certain type of work that needed to be done. If, you know, every G was mentioned earlier, they contract at a much higher rate than BPU does, okay? It's not to say that every G is wrong or BP is right. It's just, it's just that's where the industry is. A lot of times our contractors are performing a job and then those, when the job is over, sometimes those contractors are, are not here anymore. Sometimes there is other work that we may contract back to, back to uh Capital to do. They're doing mostly capital construction work. Our, our employees are doing mostly maintenance. They do get into some destruction, but if we are gonna try to do all the work in-house and not rely on contractors, there's not enough manpower to, to be able to produce and and deliver all the services that this utility or any utility needs to deliver to its citizens. So that's, that's a short answer. I mean, it can get much longer, much more complicated, but uh, we all contract to some level. And sometimes contracting uh and then not having that workforce continue to be on, in place uh, is also ways that us managers are helping to save and cut, keep, cut down on the cost of operations.
Mr. Johnson, do you mind? So I'm gonna put it a little more layman terms. I work in manufacturing and we make plastic bags right here in KCK. And we put all of our bags in boxes to ship them. Well, our company makes plastic bags, but we don't make the boxes because we don't have the part of our business built to make, manufacture boxes and print them and everything like that because it would cost so much more to do that. So we focus on our core, what we do the best, and then we buy pieces from other things, which is basically going through subcontractors. So it's the same thing here. So like when they're putting in those super-high voltage lines, well, it takes a lot of money to get people who can do that and all the equipment, but we don't do it very often. So to hire people and buy all that equipment just to sit around most of the time wouldn't be cost-effective. So that's the kind of things that you contract that out because at the end of the day, it's cheaper to pay for that short-term contract than to pay for a long-term person sitting around who's a specialist. I hope. Yeah, all of our contracts have been on.
We, yes, we bid for the majority of all the services on, it's not yes, we, we bid our, our services every time uh that there is a project, we may bid for a contractor to do more than one service, so it may not be a single project. It may be this project plus that project. Uh, and then sometimes those are split out separately to, it's, it's uh uh, depending on the project, depending on the nature of the work. And then we also have uh contracts that may run like multiple years, okay? So uh, some of our contracts are three-year contracts. Uh, I'll give you an example of that. Our tree trimming contract with two different vendors. Our tree trimming contract with two different vendors are three-year contracts, but we have two one-year options to renew. Uh, if, if if we decide that's the best thing for us to do at that time. So three-year contract. If you were here, uh, last board meeting or the board meeting before, we did a uh. Board update on our tree trimming vegetation management plan. And we talked about what used to be eleven, twelve-year trim cycle. You know, starting at your house, working our way all the way around town, getting back to your house took us sometime around eleven years in the past. We we reduced that rather quickly to a five-year trim cycle. And because the amount of work and all that was needed to go into that. Allowed us to now go come back through and and do it in three years, because we've done all the heavy lifting in the past. Now it's a lot less trees, a lot less things for us to remove. And we're able to now go around the city in every three years. So all all of our bids or go through our website or all of our bids go through a uh. A service called Demand Star. So anybody can get access to that and everybody can bid on there's qualifications to do that type of work to. Not everybody's qualified, not everybody's capable, not everybody has the. Insurance requirements, not everybody has the equipment, not everybody has the manpower. So there's, I mean, there are certain, certain things that. Uh, they would have to meet in terms of performance and pricing. Uh, and everything else is in that, in that selection criteria. We have rebid, we have rebid those services over and over.
I would, I would suggest for that, you're just, I mean, to go back and try to do represent all that. These, these are the meetings and these are the things during work sessions you'll learn about by listening in on the work sessions. If you can or if you can attend, they're also recorded, so you can go to the website at your convenience, but. But, well, it's it's in the budget, so I, we're getting, we're getting pretty far off of track on this, but. That's why I enjoy seeing people come to our meetings, because as you see more meetings, you'll watch how we build the budget. Throughout the year, it's not just a short-term thing. It's, it's all the meetings that build up to it, where we're worrying about each of the departments and how. They manage, so thank you. I know, well. Un- unfortunately, in this section, getting into, this is not the right theater for the back and forth, so.
I will follow, I will follow up with you. Okay, okay. So now we're we're about to close our public comment section. Everybody's had their chance to speak. That's signed up tonight. So we're moving on through the rest of the agenda. No, we are. Okay, so. All right, okay, okay. And I I know, I know what you meant, so. All right, so we are not partnering with any solar companies that are calling your homes or sending you stuff in the mail or anything like this, okay? There are a lot of, a lot of companies out there trying to sell you solar panels to go on your rooftop or somewhere on your property. What we've done in in in. Is tried to create some type of competition with the solar people that are trying to sell you something that costs you more. So we do have. A community solar farm ourselves. We we will, we will, we will, we will get that information to you, okay? It's cost-effective, cheaper than what you're gonna buy from any one of these salesmen, okay? It is cheaper to go with the community solar out than to buy from the salespeople that are contacting you. I will fol- I will follow up with you. I will follow up with you. So next on the agenda, uh, we're moving into the general manager staff reports section. Gabby, Janetta, who, which one? So. So this is a customer service quarterly update.
Excuse me.
We're gonna start presentations. Could you please um, not speak while the presentations are going on?
Well, point of order, hello?
That's David Haley. Yes, David.
And thank you so much, and I appreciate it. I have a very bad connection here on the Zoom, but I just did want to say at this juncture before we move to our overview. That I do appreciate the points that are being made, and I'm taking copious notes, everyone from Mr. Smith through Ms. Stevens. Uh, that has spoken today, because some of these issues need to be better addressed in terms of our policies. I wanted to reach out and to thank each one that has come out and made these points. Whether it's for our solar or energy efficiency, or for what we do in terms of services like tree trimming that make us a more efficient utility. The bottom line is, we gotta do something. And I do appreciate during the public comments section that you've allowed me to punctuate for just a moment on a bad spotty connection. That we hear you, we are moving forward and we will be reviewing the issues raised tonight. Um, we do have them chronicled at BPU.org in our archives. And we are going to move forward. I want to thank each of the members for coming out and for those that came in online. Thank you, uh, Mr. Johnson, and thank you for allowing the point of order as we move on to the next section regarding our customer service overview.
All right, thank you. So tonight, uh, is another quarterly update from one of our our key divisions in the utility customer service. And uh, tonight's focus is gonna be more centered around the call center or contact center, so. We'll we'll give you a little bit more insight into. The volume of calls and in uh, the people that are interested in why they're calling and things like that, so. I'll turn it over to you now.
Good evening. As Bill said, this is um, an overview from our customer services division. Tonight, we're gonna focus on our customer relations department. We have our supervisor here, which is Gabriella Freeman, and she will uh, present some of the um, information that we have in customer service. How our calls come in, how they're handled, and um, just present an overview of that department. Gabby?
Thank you. Good evening, visitors, staff and others. So we'll go ahead and jump into the presentation.
Can you speak into the mic?
We'll jump into the presentation for the customer service overview. So our overall goal is to provide an excellent customer service experience. And consistently strive to improve the quality of life in our community while promoting safe, reliable and sustainable utilities. So what my group is responsible for, my team will handle establishing, transferring and ending services. Answering questions regarding bills, programs, outages, and then we also disconnect and reconnect services accordingly. So the graphs that we're going to be focusing on now are variances prior to COVID and then after COVID. So you can see it's uh, information from eighteen and nineteen and then twenty-one and twenty-two. So since COVID, we've had had fewer calls into the call center. Um, most of our calls are handled through the self-service IVR menu. So some enhancements that we made to that is we added the account number. Um, that was a big thing that a lot of customers called in for that we did not have available for them on. The phone, they actually had to speak to somebody to get that information. And then on the self-service uh, IVR, we also have the customer's ability to get their balance owed, the last payment they made, and then their new due date. So um, we've also included more options available for customers through the self-service web portal. Uh, through the self-service web portal, customers can update their phone number, their email address, their mailing address. They can also set up automatic payments, uh, request paperless billing and set up an equalized payment plan on their account. So now it's going to be the same uh, information similar to before, but this is just focusing on the last fifteen months. So on average, we get about twenty to twenty-five thousand calls into uh, BPU monthly. But again, more than half are resolved through the self-service IVR. So in October, we introduced text messaging to our customers. Um, so you can see the calls to the IVR decreased, and then it, there was a slight increase to calls handled by the customer service representatives. So with the text messaging, we're pushing information out to the customers that they were normally calling in to get. So we're letting them know what their balance is and when it's due, um, and that'll include their bill or if they're on a payment arrangement. We also notify them if they have a past due balance, if they're eligible for cutoff, and if they're going to be disconnected. Um, we also started sending uh, messages to customers if their payment arrangement has terminated. So then they have the opportunity to call it and to get that reset uh, and avoid a disconnection of service. So you can see that we still handle about ten thousand calls by uh, through the representatives. So hopefully with the new technology and the enhancements we've made with the text messaging. Um, and through customer education, we can reduce the calls that come into the call center, so customers are aware of the information they have available to them on their phone or online.
Before you go, please explain the public with uh, the or means, please.
So it's an interactive voice response system, um, is what IVR stands for. So if you call into the ninety-one ninety number, that's the phone number for customer service. You can uh, enter your account number or your phone number, and then you can get the information regarding your bill amount, the due date, the last payment, and if you're eligible for disconnection.
Could you explain the self-service piece? I'm I'm not sure that everybody understands.
Oh, so you don't have to speak to a representative to get that information. The system will give that to you automated. So again, as long as you have your account number or your phone number, that information will be available to you without having to speak to a live operator. No problem. So this next slide um, is gonna focus on our whole time, our handle, our sorry, our calls handled. Into the uh, no, this is sorry, this is our whole time, and this is from twenty twenty-one to current. So you know, we give the information again on how many calls are handled um, during this time period. Still, most of our calls were handled within the IVR. And you can see that we did have an average wait time during this entire period of eight thirty-seven. And that's eight minutes and thirty-seven seconds, and if you don't include the peak, it was seven minutes and forty-six seconds. So you can see uh, from January twenty-one to April of twenty-one, the whole time was lower as well as the calls in. So during that time, we were under a moratorium. Um, the moratorium was lifted, and uh, so you can see in April, May, and June, there was a spike in hold time and calls. Then the moratorium went back into effect June twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-one. And uh, was held until November fourth of twenty-one. So you can see again, during that time, the calls decreased as well as the whole time. Um, once the moratorium was lifted in November, you can see there was a spike in calls, there was a spike in full-time. And also during that time period, um, a customer mentioned it earlier, that was up here in October of twenty-one. We introduced the new bill layout, so that caused some calls to come in in November and December uh, due to the bill, and then the disconnects resuming. And then uh, January and February, I'm sorry, can you go back? Um, and then January and February, you'll see there was another spike in our whole time. Um, so uh, somebody else mentioned earlier up here, we were holding accounts. Uh, that were pending cure assistance, and that was lifted in December of twenty-two. Uh, so we expected our call volume to go up in January and February, so customers could uh, figure out what we could do, what programs we had to offer them. And then um, we also had a a lot of calls due to high bills because of the ERC increase, so we discussed that information with the customer. Now, what we've done um, in the month of, at the end of February is on the, I think, the twenty-third. Normally, if we disconnect customers, customers for non-pay, we disconnect all at once. Um, so that was causing a lot of calls to come into the call center at one time, and customers had to hold longer. So what we started doing was disconnecting calls and ba- or the disconnects in batches. And you can see in March that made a decrease, so we still had a good amount of calls come in, but the whole time went down because the calls were spaced out. So we were able to assist customers faster and uh, get their services reconnected or their questions answered. And then this next slide is gonna be a representation of how many reps we had available during this period, uh, same timeframe and how it impacted the whole time. Though my number of phone reps went down from thirty-three percent uh, from mid twenty twenty-one until late of twenty twenty-two. So in December of twenty-one, I was down four reps uh, due to internal transfers or illnesses. So that left seven reps available to handle calls into the call center. We did hire three reps in August of twenty twenty-two, and they started taking calls in October. So you can see in October, uh, the whole time did go down. Um, so since then, we have hired and trained four reps in the past six plus, uh, six months. And new hire training can take anywhere from six to eight weeks, and as of April of this year, I have twelve reps available to take calls. So this next slide, these are new things, a couple of new things that we're tracking, and then we just want to let you know callback in queue did resume as of February first. So that graph up top is a representation of the weekly calls in since we resumed on February first. And then late in twenty twenty-two, we started tracking escalations and customer issues. Um, so the escalations are calls that I handle from my representatives or lead. That the customer was upset and they escalated to a supervisor, so I've been tracking that monthly. And then the customer issues are accounts that are reviewed by me that come from the UG or board member. So what our hope is with tracking these items, it'll help us review for policy and processes and training. Okay, and then the next slide is a representation of our average talk time. So you can see that our talk time has actually increased. Um, so the reason that it increased, uh, this is gonna be from twenty-one, while we have pre-COVID numbers and then post-COVID. So as they discussed earlier, we did have a lot of programs that were available after COVID hit. So Kira started in April of twenty-one. Um, Ewop, that was Emergency Water Assistance Program, started in January of twenty-two. And then K-HAP, that was similar to Kira but for housing, uh, customers that own their homes. It started in April of twenty twenty-two. So when customers would call into customer service and let us know they are having these issues, paying their bills. We would have to ask certain questions to see what program they were eligible for, and then give them the information on who to contact to try to get assistance. Um, again, we had the new bill rollout in twenty twenty-one. And then um, if a customer does have questions like for payment options, if they should get agency assistance arrangements or flex pay. We do take our time on those calls to explain to the customers who they need to contact, how arrangements work, how flex pay works. Because we want to make sure that the customers understand what they're signing up for and what they're doing before they set up a program with us.
Gabby, can I stop you for a second and ask you, let's say I'm just on regular pay, getting my monthly bill, but I need to change to flex pay. I'm having some difficulties and I need to change. How, tell me the whole process for that.
So if a customer calls in to say they want to set up flex pay, then we go over a list of highlights with them to go over uh, what the program covers. It's about um, twelve statements that we go over with them. And then if they do decide to set up flex pay, then the customer service rep actually has to take them off of post-pay billing. Uh, and then we've put them up in a system that's called My Usage, which the customer will have access to that via the web or an app. And then once the customer is set up, we can send them messages. So we'll ask them, do you want to receive notifications via text? Phone call or email, and they can sign up for multiple notifications, multiple ways, or they can just do text or phone call or email. And we can let them know if their balance is low, if they um, if they have a negative balance, if they've been disconnected, if they've made a payment. Um, they get a recharge email, and then if they've been reconnected, then they get a reconnection notice. So the customers are notified of their account status.
Okay.
And then if they want to come off flex pay, again, they just contact us and we'll put them back to flex pay.
The same way to get off, it's just to go, to go back on.
So you would have to speak to someone to get that data, to get that done.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and if I'm new to flex pay, if I understand this right, you do not pay a deposit, is that correct?
Correct. So even if you aren't new to flex pay, like you said, you're an existing customer, if you have a deposit on your account, whoever sets up flex pay, their deposit gets credited towards their balance.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just. Wanted that to be clarified. Thank you.
Um, so it's just a prepaid program, so we would compare it to like uh, putting gas in your car. So you put gas in your car and it gets low, you know, you have to go fill it up. So we do the same thing. You put money on your account. We'll deduct your usage from it daily, and then once the balance gets low, we'll send you a notification. To let you know that the balance is low and to make a payment to replenish. And then once it gets to zero, we notify you that it's at zero and you're in danger of shut off, so you need to make a payment as soon as possible to avoid a disconnection of service. So once you reach a zero balance, uh, you have that whole day to make a payment. If you don't make a payment, then the following day you're disconnected.
But you can pay small amounts over time.
Correct. As I said, since it's prepaid, normally the balance you owe isn't as much because you're, you're being charged for your usage daily. There isn't for electric, there is for water because we roll the truck.
So we're, we're past the public comment section.
Yeah.
So. You know, that's what the public comment section is for, is to allow the public to ask questions at that time. We're now into the regular staff's part of of our agenda. We're past the public comment section.
Robbie, go next slide, please.
Okay, and then um this is some of these items I discussed, I believe it was in January. Um, so this is our stats on our customer service monthly requests and then the BPU dot com monthly requests. So the self-service uh monthly requests, or is it the customer goes into BP dot com and selects manage account? So from there, they can make requests to start, stop, or transfer service. Um, they can also ask questions. And um when customers call in or set up an account, we do make them aware that we have this online option available for them. To go register their account, um so they can view their bill or set up ACH to have their service fee waived. And then the BPU dot com request, um those come in through BPU. Um, when I did the presentation in January, it would have been on the homepage at the bottom section where you click on contact us and you can actually reach multiple departments. Customer service is one of them. So through there, we get um just account information and general questions. And you can see with the text messaging that rolled out in twenty twenty two, those emails also took a dip into customer service again because we're pushing out the information that the customers were. Calling in for uh through the IVR, through customer service. So they don't have to call in to get that information or email in um or make any contact because we're getting in touch with them first. Okay, and then this is actually a live uh screen of what I look at daily. Um, I have access to this, my lead does. Uh, Jeanetta also does, and then the reps also have them, but theirs isn't as detailed as mine. So uh this was at eleven thirty say uh thirty seven AM on Monday the seventeenth. Um, so you can see the top one that says uh CS English Agent Status. If it's on the ACD, that means that representative is on a call. If it's idle, uh that means they're sitting and waiting for a call to come into them. And then if they're in an unavailable state, that means that they're either on break or lunch. And then logged off, that's people that either weren't there uh for the day because or left early, like if they took active vacation. Um, the next one, you'll just see um some of this repeated, but the next one is our Spanish agents. And then the last one is our callback in queue agents, or sorry. It's yeah, Spanish and then callback in queue agents. So then the marquee's over on the right-hand side, the first one is our customer service English stats. So at that time, we had no calls waiting. Um, since we didn't have any calls waiting, it won't measure the longest hold. We'd spoken to two hundred and twenty-two customers that day since seven AM. Thirty-seven customers had disconnected before they spoke to a rep. The average time for them to disconnect was three minutes and fifty seconds. Nine calls had been interflowed, so that means those calls went to callback in queue. And then our service level at that time was uh seventy-two percent, and our average speed to answer the call was three minutes and forty-seven seconds. So then we displayed those same stats for Spanish and payment arrangements and then callback in queue. And then I just want to go over some of the types of calls that we get into customer service. So you know, we get the normal calls um for billing questions or um due dates. We also get calls, uh we actually have to deal a lot with other departments, and my representatives have to be knowledgeable on other departments, processes, and policies. So like, for example, if a customer has a needs release, or they've had a diversion, or they need a safe to restore, that's uh we actually have to tell them the steps of what they need to do. So it's not something actually too much that my group is involved in. But we are knowledgeable about it because most of the time we'll get the call before the other department, so we can let them know what's expected. Um, what they need to do, and then we can also give them the number on who to call going forward, so they can uh get the issue resolved faster. We also take calls uh for trash issues, pilot, uh you know, UG questions, wastewater. So we'll go over the rate information with the customer, how it's charged, how it's billed, and then if they have additional questions, we'll refer them to the unified government. And then recent improvements that we've made. Um, so we do have an automated um operator system now. And that menu is in English and Spanish. Previously, we didn't have that in Spanish. Um, so that's available in Spanish. And then, as you know, our uh website will translate to Spanish. And then something that we did internally for our uh whole group, for the whole company, we have a BPU central page, it's our intranet site. And then each department has their own tab. So on the customer service tab, we made sure to include um any job aids and then our processes and policies. So all the information that the customer service reps need to look up to handle their calls is in one spot. Everything's going to be updated at the same time, so everybody will be looking at the most updated information. Previously, we'd send emails, so. You know, they'd have to keep track of, oh, was this the most recent email we got on this, or was this one? So everything's in one location. Um, we've updated our training manual. And we also have job aids. So all that information's on there to help the reps uh. Get the information they need quicker and pass that on to the customer and then make sure that we're giving the same incorrect information. And then some potential future improvements we're going to make. Um, we have the new My Meter Portal for customers. So that's going to replace our Energy Engage. And then just one of the enhancements I know that we're going to have with that is uh customers that are net meter. They're going to be able to view now what they've generated versus what they've used, and that's something they can't do currently. Um, real-time posting of kiosk payments. That'll be a big win uh for flex pay customers because uh currently if they pay at a kiosk, we get a file twice a day. So once they pay, they won't reconnect until the payment post. So they'll have to wait until the files run at eight or three o'clock. And then at that time, they'd be reconnected. So once we get the real-time posting, they'll be reconnected right away. They won't be a wait for them. We're also looking to add credit and debit card payments at kiosk machines. So currently, they can only pay there right now with cash or check. Um, so that'll also be a win for the customers. And we're going to do a move-in, move-out form for the customers on self-service. Uh, so that'll be on the BPU website. Uh, once it's available, they'll click on Start Service Transfer Service. And then a form will come up for them to fill out to uh get their information in. It is going to be a secure form, um and they can upload their documents and set it uh send it over so we can get them set up for services. And then we're looking to add self-service forms on BP dot com. Um, so for example, like if a customer has a report to landlord. We can put that form on there instead of us having to send it to them and send it back in, so they can fill it out online and submit it to us, and it'll get done quicker. You guys have any questions?
So on on the last slide. What's the timeframe you're thinking of to see the debit or credit cards at kiosses, for example?
Man, we're past the public comment section.
Like, how long do you anticipate, Jeanetta, that would take to get the debit and credit at kiosks?
So currently, we're still having meetings with the vendor that we have, and we're setting the, you know, what the rules are going to be, how we're going to do it, the amount. And uh, you know, all the particulars of that. So we definitely haven't got a date in mind yet because we're still currently in meetings. We had a meeting today. We were talking about that because we have to set up certain criteria. It is not like. Our online service that we have. Where you have to verify your account with certain certain information. At this point, you just put in your name, your address. But it's not verifying it back or sending an API call. That goes back to our system to make sure we have the same customer. So we have to make sure that we have all of those things in place to verify. That that is the right customer that's pulled up the right account. So once we set up all those verification points. And have all of that in place, and then we can talk about expanding just from cash and check to debit and credit. So we, I don't have an exact date for you right now. However, we're looking at that within this year of twenty twenty three.
Okay, thank you.
So one thing we're, what the, one thing we're doing is also taking a look at a lot of our customer service internal processes and how. How do we streamline those operations even further? Uh, we're also. Looking at how do we build out our self customer self-service options even more? To allow people to be able to get to the information or or be able to perform certain transactions without having to. To contact people directly. And tie up a lot of agents' time for doing things that. They could easily do themselves, okay? Once we do that, you should see a another drop in. The call wait times. All volumes should go down. Uh, and what I would like to do is continue focusing on that direction. And then kind of realigning staffing around what is it that we may be not getting to that's still important? And having our our staff focus on some of those things. But I think, you know. I think there's more opportunity for us to be able to. Uh, build our technology out to allow people to help themselves and and perform certain tasks for themselves without. Without us having to go through the manual process of doing that. Uh, that's another efficiency and other cost savings. Uh, strategy for the future, and we're still trying to work in that direction. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Gabby. Thank you, Jeanetta. So I'll move on to miscellaneous comments. We didn't, we don't have a. It's many uh topics on this this agenda. We've got certainly two topics on the executive session, so trying to keep the regular session agenda light. But uh. You know, this week on Monday, uh. We did have Senator Moran visit us and. As you know, there was a public announcement on that day, uh. BPU securing some federal funds to. Address some of the issues we're having with our. With our infrastructure on the water side. We applied, we applied for a federal grant and. Uh, we received that, got noticed that we received it a while back and. Senator Moran wanted to come to town and make that public announcement that we can do it on on Monday. So. We got a grant in the in the tune of ten million dollars to be able to. Uh aggressively, more aggressively go after uh some of our water mains that are aging. You know, there's parts of our city that's well above seventy-five years old. Some are even go above a hundred years old, okay? And this is not. That untypical compared to other water utilities, especially urban water utilities. Uh, we made a case on. Needing federal funds to be able to address the uh. The needs in uh areas east of six thirty-five, the areas that have our oldest infrastructure. We're focusing on low-income uh neighborhoods where the aging infrastructure appears the most. And this will help get us back on pace with keeping up with. What the normal uh conversion rate should be for replacing water mains. We've kind of fallen behind. We haven't had the revenues, haven't had the uh means to keep up. We would like to get back to at least one percent replacement per year. Uh, so. We have about a thousand or so miles of lines throughout our city. This ten million dollars is only going to cover about fifteen miles. So, and it's, but it will help, okay? And it'll it'll get us back back on track and catch us up in the short run. In the longer run, it's going to mean. How to be, how does BPU now continue to fund? And finance these projects over several more years? And that's, that is the thing that staff is presenting to the board. Uh. And this is happening. Not just over a short period of time. Every utility, Kansas City, Missouri, all of us have aging infrastructure on the water systems. And. This is the first time BPU has really been successful in getting any type of federal assistance of this magnitude to be able to go after this. They're still going to require. Uh, us to go out and cook and and collect loans. From borrowing money from the state of Kansas, we would cash fund some of these future projects. But it's going to be an ongoing. Uh, capital expense that's going to still require us to take, that's going to take place for several years or decades to come. You know, we're we're making progress. But, you know, that's where we find ourselves. That's where Kansas City, Missouri funds itself. That's where any other cities. Similar size or bigger. Similar age, uh water mains. Sewer lines, you know. That's why the federal government is such a big focus on. And pass an infrastructure bill. To be able to address some of these roads, bridges. Streets, sidewalks, curbs. I mean, there's, this nation is not healthy when it comes to. Public infrastructure, so. Thought that was good news. Uh, we're certainly looking at other funding opportunities to address other things. A lot of that is not clear today. I mean, there's. There's things as to that's well-known as to the federal government is trying to push money in. Many directions, and there's probably more money available than. Many of us have seen in at one period of time. It's just working through and understanding how does those dollars. Fit what BPU needs to go after? And how do, how do we make sure that we're successful in obtaining some of those dollars for our utility operations? The other thing I'll just quickly mention is I had the pleasure today to go to McKinley Grade School. Right down the street this morning. I was asked to come down. Meet with a bunch of fourth and fifth graders. And talk to them about. Uh, career development. Uh, and it wasn't just me, it was it was other. Other leaders in the uh in the community. Uh. And some of these schools are doing some pretty imaginative things when it comes to trying to reach out. And get kids and on the right track and keep them on the right track by having introducing them to. People that have certain careers. Uh, and have a certain status, I would guess. Throughout the community. So one of our judges was there. I mean, there's other people that was there too. So. I mean, we all went to different breakout session rooms. I had five different groups of kids to come through, and I really talked about here's what. The life feels and and the the daily life of a utility uh employee. And here's what the utility means to this community. Here's what we do. And uh. I caught all of them's attention as long as I could keep it. So it was uh. But you know, they, kids of that age, they're very inquisitive. They uh asked a lot of questions. So I was fortunate enough to be able to answer them. But you know, the one thing that I. I always want to impress on people of that age and even people a little bit, a little bit older than that too is. The opportunities that they have in front of them today are endless. And I put myself back into that age group. And I'm, and I talk about and I make the comparisons between what was available to me at that time. And, you know. Held this up and said, when I was a fifth grader, this didn't exist. We didn't have computers. We didn't have a lot of things. You guys are in, right in the middle of a technology explosion. Information is rarely available and the. Even though the job markets are changed. Your opportunities are. Boundless compared to. Somebody like me at that age trying to figure out what I'm going to do sometime somewhere later in life. So. Just wanted to let the board know that, you know, we're still involved in seeing those type of activities in the community. Uh, that's all I have for for Miss Laney's comments. I'll turn it back over to you, Tom.
Okay. Uh, at this time, we'll have uh board comments. Um. I guess I'll start out. I'd just like to thank everybody that uh that showed up this evening. And uh made their feelings known. I'm. As Mr. Senator Haley, Mr. Haley said earlier. He's listened, he listens to what you have to say. I've listened to what you have to say and I've. And I'm, I'm, it it tears me up. To hear these these types of things that are going that are going on, but it's. It's not just the utility bills. I'm retired. I had to dig into my savings myself this last month. One of the ladies here said she had to, you know, she has her savings and she's blessed. Well, I had some bills that came due and I had to dig in and hopefully I'll be able to make it up over the next next few months. When I go, you know, to fill up my car with gas or go to buy milk or eggs, things are are higher. And the same thing with the utility. You go to buy a a foot of wire. It's probably doubled or tripled. You'd go to buy a transformer. It's probably hundreds of thousands of dollars more today than it was a year ago. These are all all things that we're we're grappling with. We're struggling with, but we feel. We feel we have this, we. I've got family that live here, all my family lives here, and they're, you know, they have to pay the bills. We all, we all are facing the same, the same issues that you are, we are, we're all in the same boat. We just need to figure out how we can make it all work. And I, and I'm, I struggle with that because I know that our costs, the utilities costs are going up. Personally, my costs are going up. How do we? Juggle all that? The other thing uh that that came to light this evening was about public comments. I know that, you know, when we're going through the program, that there are times when the public would like to make. You know, some kind of ask a question or make a make a statement. I don't know how we can do that and still manage the meeting unless we could move the public comments to the end. And then the public could get up and then they, if they, during the meeting, they could. Make their notes and whatever and and get up and and ask their questions or make their comments at that time. Or perhaps uh set aside at the end of each item. A very limited amount of time where the where the public could. Uh, you know, ask a question or get a, try to get an, you know, to get some clarification on something. Those are some that I think that as a board, we probably could look at and decide how we would want to. Go forward uh with the meetings, but I would suggest that we look at at something along those lines. Uh, of course, and that would mean that the public could have to stay here through. Of course, and that would mean that the public could have to stay here throughout the whole meeting and they couldn't get up and make their, make their comments and then, and then leave. So maybe that'd be a good thing. I, I don't know. So that's all I have to say. Thank you all for coming and be safe. Uh, David. Are you with us?
I am. Thank you, Tom. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Groneman. Um, thank you for your comments because actually I was thinking the very same thing regarding having a time for the public to visit with us again after hearing presentations. I appreciate Ms. Freeman, Gabriella Freeman, giving an update on some of the nuances for customer service this evening, things that I certainly didn't know about. I'm glad to hear about the spend down, so to speak. So you know, when you're almost out before disconnection. So I'd be open to that i- if you would, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the board to having a public commentary. So we have more of a dialogue about some issues that come up during our meeting. I want to thank the presentation that was brought not only by the various members that came, but also by Mr. Johnson. He brought up something that, you know, sometimes these school kids can throw us off with questions about the utility. But there are also some more complicated questions that are coming, that come from those who are taking the time to come to the meeting tonight. And those that are, are logging in as well. And this is an ongoing dilemma. It's an issue. And, and the lip service that we're paying to the issues that remain deeply affects and concerns me. Yes, we have our families here. Yes, we're here in Wyandotte County. But the end, at the end of the day, it's a less livable community because of policies that need to be corrected from within our utility. And how we reach that point, I, I don't know. And we need to look and listen to the experts. We need to look at how other utilities, those that are governed perhaps by the Kansas Corporation Commission uh, and other regulatory entities do. I know that we're a municipal utility. I know that we have the burden of the taxes unified government has that are not just the taxes we have on our properties. That we've all had sticker shock from, most of us from our appraisals. But also how the ripple effect is being recorded when we open up our monthly BPU bills. So, you know, I, I share the frustration. I'm a part of the frustration. I'm there too, as you said earlier, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Groneman. And I'm not here though, just to go round and round and round and listen to what we have and not find a way to find some solutions. We've got to find some solutions. And here now in April um, of, of 2023, we have to look to a board and to staff and to management that looks ways to reduce at the end of the day, the burden of inflation. That inflation is not only the BPU's, it's everywhere, as you said. As you said, Tom and others, no. But also how we do it because we got to have lights. We got to have water. Uh, and we, we have to find a way to find some way to, to, to address that. So I'm sorry again, that was now see you next meeting. Thank you to the, each of the members that did come from the public and, and that spoke, also those that spoke online. And I don't want to give lip service to what was said. Help us find a way to, um, to make some sort of solutions come about through the policies that we need to implement. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Mylan.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank all of the visitors this evening. And I have a lot to say in a short period of time. Let's put things in perspective. I'm looking at the seat that Ms. Hill brought today. Very, thank Ms. Hill. Uh, I'll run a little bit. You mentioned that the BPU Kansas City Kansas population is 156,000, not correct. And you indicated that the Kansas City Missouri is 508. And Oldham Park is 1987 and Springfield is 169. These are your figures. But what's missing here is customer service. We have 65,000 customers that pay the light bill. Very simple. We have 50,000 that pay the water bill. Very clear. It doesn't tell you here that KC P and L has 1 million person to pay the same bill. Doesn't tell you that Kansas City Missouri or Paul have 1 million customers. We have 65,000. Very small. Is it a price that's all compatible? We have 50,000 people that pay the water bill. It takes $22 a month on the bill. Usually government for wastewater. We have 50,000 people that has to pay that. That's for the BPU bill. You have $17 on trash collection. Last February, if I recall, it was $15. Usually raise that in June or July to $16. This last November, they raised to $17. That's only utility bill. They raised the, they raised the sewer tax from $4,050 in November, $650 per month. The pilot on the average is $12 a month. That averages out to 11.9% on the utility bill. So now if you use simple mathematics, arithmetic, it shows that if those four items was taken off your bill for the month of May, your bill would go down $51. Very simple. So you usually be able to go down ve- very small amount of $51 in one month. And you have more money to buy groceries if that's the case. I'm really trying to say that BPU is a nonprofit entity. That means we don't make a profit like an investment on utilities, Kansas City Missouri, KC P and L. They have stockholders that go to Wall Street. They take money home into the bank. We recycle every dollar. Every dollar is recycled as community. So the bill you pay, that you pay and I pay is recycled. I pay the bill. And we have the O and M cost, operations and maintenance cost. You can't flip that switch. We don't hire employees to flip the switch. The lights go out. We need somebody to climb that pole, turn it back on in the darkness. Everything, there's difficult job. You flush your stove, you got to have water. We got 50,000 persons pay water bill. You got to have that. So I'm just trying to say, let's put things in perspective. We have a small community. 156,000 people. And you want a million dollar Rose Rose Mercedes Benz operation with very limited amount of money. So folks, we do a good job and I'm proud of Kansas City, Kansas. We have the best Ozana collective water system in America. If you don't know that, the first collector well was in Germany. Kansas City, Kansas. BPU was number two in the world. You didn't know that? No, I'm just trying to tell you. That means you don't have to worry about the drinking water in Jackson, Mississippi, Mississippi. And, and Memphis, Tennessee, and so forth, violent country. Because we had the purest water almost humanly possible. Comes 100 feet below the Missouri River. Your system that come out, when you drink the water, it's a good tasting water. I mean, I like the taste, but you don't have to worry about dying overnight because the water was not pure. So put things in perspective. And when you talk about the money revenue, well, the fact is, I'm so glad to see this many people here because you know what? I've been here for 30 years. Sometimes I see one or two. And now all of a sudden it's very important because pandemic came to town, folks. That's what came to America. That's what came to the world. And everybody's very concerned about what you're doing. Well, we still got one of the best water system in the world. Our utility electric system, it can be compared with anybody, any place. Think about the time, the downtime when you have colleges and so forth. Check the system out. Shorter period of time to return back on again. KCK, Kansas City Missouri, KC P and L, they can't compare with BPU and our workforce that turning the lights back on in a short period of time. That's all record. So I can summarize a lot of things because I'm so glad that we have a public utility. You can walk in here lack of order night. That's, that's important community. You can't walk into Kansas City Missouri and say nothing. What you see is what you get Casey P and L. I'm not knocking them. They do a good job, making customers so forth. You don't have the authority or the privilege to walk in and say, Mr. Mylan, Mr. Johnson, this is right and wrong. We know that we have some policy issues to be changed. You have policy book that thick, folks. It takes time to make those changes. Keep in mind, I have witnessed over 60 different board members in 30 years. Everybody's different. Behind every face, there's a story, things to be told. So keep in mind, it takes a combination thing to make it work. When you have a public on your child, it's mandated that we, we twice a month, Wednesday, first and third Wednesday, every month, you can come in and voice your opinion. That's a privilege. You don't have a prison everywhere. Don't go Johnson, Connor and start, I got some comments or complaints. They tell you go back home, just pay your bill because you're off immediately. Not 60, 45 days, like we allow that. So there's so much to say and I'm, I'm kind of heartbroken that I hope you hear the hard stories some of y'all are having. But the fact is, we have a system. You can walk in here, the first and third Wednesday, telephone. We have, how many places we have that you can go and telephone? So many, about 10 places you pay your bill. So I'm kind of real excited. And I'm very, very happy to hear the comments I think are unfounded to certain extent. We're not listening to a lot of the right people. We got a lot of correction to be made, but folks be careful. Just don't get erratic about things you're not clear about. Bring the issues to this board and the table. We listen. We're not here to debate and to argue. We're going to listen, defer and go forward. Jesus Christ.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks for my time.
Uh, is Rose on?
No.
I don't think she is. Okay, Jeff, Mr. Bryant.
Um, well, thank you to everybody who came out tonight, those who stayed especially. Thank you. It's, it's always nice to see people hang around to hear the feedback. You know, I'll agree with Bob on, we're not here to debate. You know, I, it's a it's a fine line of balance to try to educate, you know? I can tell you, I've been on the board for 12 years and it takes a long time to get an understanding of what, you know, the broad amount of work that goes on through different departments, different channels throughout the utility. And it, it has to work in unison so that at the flip of a switch or the turn of a faucet handle, you have what you're expecting. All right. And there's costs that go with those. This is a nonprofit utility when, uh, when the gentleman earlier was, was talking about a surplus. Understand when I hear the word surplus, when it applies to the budget, it tells me that we have not done maintenance that was scheduled. And it could be for a lot of different reasons. It may be materials are on backwater. Uh, that's become more frequent. Or, you know, the manpower was used somewhere else, storm work, you know, reclamation or something. But at the end of the day, all of those dollars are earmarked to be put back into the system to keep the system available for you tomorrow and next week and the week down the road. So that's important that, you know, as everybody comes in, you know, just, just listen and take in, you know, discussion and listen to the different parts. That's what I try to do is, is try to gather all these pieces and see how they fit together like gears until you understand kind of how different departments work and they rely on each other to get jobs done so that the whole system flows uninterrupted. So the only other thing I have is some of you may be aware, uh, the Community Engagement Committee meeting this, this evening was postponed due to unforeseen circumstances. Uh, on behalf of our committee chair, Ms. Ovani, uh, I want to notify everyone that tonight's meeting is rescheduled for the next board meeting, which would be, uh, Wednesday, May 3rd. So there'll be a notification later that'll come out to give the time and everything, but it will be, we understand the importance of that and we'll get it right back into the schedule. So thank you very much.
Uh, Mary?
Um, I'd also like to thank everyone that came out tonight. I think putting things in perspective as far as cost goes when getting a $10 million grant and it only works for 15 miles. That just, it was, it was hard for me to assimilate that information. So, um, I understand how costs and fees. I led that question to Gabby. So Ms. Hill, you would hear uh, about flex pay, having no deposit. So that was a leading question and I probably should have just talked to you privately afterwards because it brought a lot of discussion, which we feel like we can't give you five minutes here and then just continue the discussion because we have executive session and we'd, we'd probably be here till midnight or after. So that suggestion that somebody made about putting that comment section later so questions could be answered. Cause I know there's somebody back there with a question. I'm going to, as soon as I stop talking, run over there and try to answer her question, but we hear you. I need for you to know that we hear you and, um, trying to balance it all so that when you turn the tap on and your light switch, it's going to be there. Thank you for your attendance.
Okay. Um, at this time, uh, would you like to make the motion for going into executive session or?
Yes. And are we staying in this room? I think Bob would set it up.
Rob said.
Yes.
That's fine.
The proposed motion for adoption is as follow. I move that after taking a five minute break, the board go into executive session for 30 minutes in the first floor boardroom to discuss confidential matters related to an update on labor negotiations pursuant to the employer employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And that the general manager, William Johnson, chief administrative officer, Lori Austin, chief deputy chief counsel, Angela Lawson, director of human resources, Dennis, Dennis Dymovich, HR manager, Ashley Cole, and chief operating officer, Jeremy Ash, outside counsel, Ryan Dean and Spencer Low. All be present to participate in the discussion. All others to be dismissed from the room. And electronic and telephonic transmissions cease and that we reconvene in open sessions with electronic and telephonic transmissions resuming at.
How many minute break? I would, I would prefer a 10 minutes so that we can make sure we get the room.
Okay, that motion could be then made with the 10 minutes.
Okay. Oh, all right. So that if at 10 minutes, that means we would reconvene at 8:25.
I'm sorry.
At 8:25. Uh, this is Jeff. I make the motion to take a 10 minute break prior to the executive session.
This is my last second.
And that motion is with the, with all the executive session language.
With all the, yes.
It's been moved and segmented. Um, roll call please.
Roll call, gentlemen?
I.
Haley.
No. You know.
He's, he's not entitled because he's not.
Mylan.
You must have been a person to attend executive session.
Mylan?
I.
Bryant?
I.
Gonzalez.
I.
That motion carries.
The second one.
Yes. So just call us back into open session and I'll.
At this time I'll, I'll call the, the meeting back into open session.
All right. And I, there is a second proposed motion and for adoption. And that would be I move that the board go into executive session in the first floor boardroom to discuss confidential matters related to an update on labor negotiation pursuant to the employer employee negotiations, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And that the general manager, William Johnson, chief administrative officer, Lori Austin, deputy chief counsel, Angela Lawson, director of human resources, Dennis Dymovich, HR manager, Ashley Cole, chief operating officer, Jeremy Ash, and outside counsel, Ryan Dean and Spencer Low be present to participate in the discussion. All others to be dismissed from the room and electronic and telephonic transmissions cease. And that we reconvene in open sessions with electronic and telephonic. All others to be dismissed from the room and electronic and telephonic transmission cease, and that we reconvene in open sessions with the electronic and telephonic transmissions resuming at. Oh, and it would be for thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, yeah.
At eight fifty-five.
This is Jeff, move to go into executive session.
This is Mary, I second. Okay. Roll call, roll call, Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
No.
Mylan? Bryant?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
That motion carries, we will be going into executive session.
Point of order. Point of order.
Yes.
What is it, David?
Um, just want to state for the record that the technology exists to include those who are joining by the board electronically to not disclose the privacy that should be required for executive session to members of the public or those not authorized. Just wanted to make that point, uh, because um, I'm, myself and others who are joining electronically or excluded from vital discussions regarding the matters of utility, and it need not be, we have the technology, thank you.
Not entitled to.
Open session, this is Jeff, move to adjourn.
I second, Mary.
Been moved and seconded, that we adjourn, roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Mylan?
Mylan and I.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
That motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.
Have fun, Senator.
Yeah, thanks so much, I appreciate it, Mr. Vice Chair.
Wish I was with you.
Anytime, sir, you're most welcome.